So next we have Mr. Paul Willis from Plant Moran who's going to come.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Paul Willis. I'm a partner in charge of the K-12 practice within Plant Moran Cressa. And again, very pleased to be here and also want to thank the administrative team on the left for a lot of the information and work to really put this presentation together. And as Dr. Zolki mentioned, it's one of the other reports that we've done. Coincidentally, we've actually done multiple reports with Middle Cities and/or Stan Fred, four districts that even have their own internal resources. So again, it's best practices to continue to have those internal resources, but also kind of do that gut check going forward. So real quickly, a lot of people probably heard of Plant Moran, more on the auditing and accounting and finance side, if you will. But Cressa is actually a multidisciplinary team of professionals. So my background, I'm an action architect. I've been with the firm for 15 years. And at the end of the day, we are here really for a lot of our, I'll call them middle market clients. So if you think of AAA, so we do a lot of the demographics and a lot of the real estate for AAA. You look at BAE Automotive, we're working on a small ice arena downtown Detroit. I work with Bowman Hospitals and some of their capitals. But my primary focus is within the K-12 and higher education market. We are again, one of the four providers recommended by the Department of Treasury to provide enrollment for districts. So again, if you're a Livonia Schools, Rochester, Wayne Westland Schools, utilizing these reports for financial projections, facilitalization, future capital bond planning. So again, these are really used for really three, two different tiers for administrative and board purposes. At the end of the day, we're just here to provide independent information and advice and obviously let the board administration take that and incorporate into their policy going forward. Just real quickly, in terms of our clients across the state, we provide enrollment projections for roughly 60 districts across the state. Really, if you take a look at it from A to Z, so from Ann Arbor all the way down to Zeeland. We also work with a lot of other large districts such as Ann Arbor Schools, Utica Schools, Detroit Public Schools, Plymouth Canton, et cetera. So again, we bring this information, kind of like what are your peers looking like? You obviously have experienced some growth, which is great, versus some others have, let's say, some declining operational challenges, if you will, going forward. So that's just a little bit of background of Plant Moran Cressa and some of our existing clients. On slide six, this is just kind of a snapshot over the last five years. We've experienced about a 99.03% accuracy, if you will, or roughly 99.3% deviation from our projections to actuals. So again, we're, it's not an exact science, but we think at above 99%. If my children came home with a 99%, I'd be feeling pretty good about that, so. So enrollment projections, we do things a little bit differently, only the fact that we do adjust our demographics based on what's happening within the district's boundaries. And I'll get into that here a little bit. We also take a look at the historic enrollments. So we actually look at the last seven years of historical enrollment. The numbers we'll be looking at this evening are actually full-time equivalency or FTE. So it's a little bit different than headcount. And I think it matches up with maybe what you've seen from a financial standpoint of over 20,200 K-12. And then obviously the inclusion of special ed and adult ed for total numbers. We take a look at the live births. Again, that's audited by the Department of Community Health. And then again, we take the last seven years and then take that information and then again, adjust it to what's happening within the boundaries of the Dearborn Public Schools. So on slide nine, this polygon should look familiar. This is your district's boundary, probably established in the late 60s, 70s, and probably hasn't modified a whole lot since then. Again, we take a look at what's happening in the district versus Wayne County and also the state of Michigan. We also take a look at your reporting forms. And I think as Dr. Zolki mentioned, probably the three individuals on the right are most familiarized with those forms when they're doing all that information. But again, taking a look at a method one, a method two, and a method three. The information we are showing tonight is method one, which is what we'd recommend for the district to consider going forward long-term for your financial utilization and capital planning. So in your overall board report, there's 187-page report. I'm not going to go through each page specifically, but we've got some snapshots in time. This is just one of the slides that really takes a snapshot of what's happening in that blue polygon. So for instance, there's 21,843 PK through 12 students in that polygon. So you look, take a look at the breakdown, there's roughly 61% choose primary public school, another 38% that has pre-primary public. So some districts, we say, what's our opportunity to potentially get three and four-year-old programs into the facility? This gives you some of those numbers that are within that boundary. If you look at the K-12 numbers, about 86% choose public and then 13.26%. So you're just a little bit under the state average of 89% for public and 10% for private. So some of our districts, that height, that number could be as high as 20, 22% choose private. Other districts, we've seen that as low as 8%. So again, you're just slightly a little bit above the state average for primary per public. And then again, this is broken down actually at the high school levels in the report as well. Wayne County, there's 303,749 students, and in the state of Michigan, there's 1.8. Again, if you take a look, that's the total number of K-12 students in the state, about 1.6 to 10 public. And the others would choose private education based on those numbers going forward. Also in the report, I know we didn't highlight it, but it does talk about the number of households, the number of households with school-aged children, the number of kids that are in per household unit, what's the discretionary income. So again, there's a lot of great data information. Again, a lot of our private clients use this, a lot of municipalities use this. So we worked with the City of Westland when they looked at renovating some of their senior centers, recreational library, et cetera. But just a lot of great data that's in the report that I just want to highlight, just some of those findings tonight. We also take a look at a trend. So in the report, we have a five-year trend. And oftentimes, people ask, why can't we go past that? Unfortunately, those children have not been born yet, but David and I are working on that software to help through that process. But again, it's really taken a look, and I think what we're showing here is a 3.3% growth total area. And we've also broken it down by grade levels. And again, we're here to share some of those projections going out into the five-year window at the elementary level and obviously out to 2021 and beyond, when you take a look at your existing cohorts going forward. Something to note on this slide and slide 11 is just the number of households with four, five, and six persons. Again, kind of back in your demographics, we are seeing that trend in other areas that are experiencing some immigration opportunities. So again, we track that going forward. We also take a look at when those individuals move into the district's boundaries. Again, providing that five-year trend going forward to see if this is a one-year trend or a five-year trend going forward. Lastly, we break it down by public pre-primary, both public and private, and then again, also by grades. And as you can see and highlight in blue, you will be experiencing some growth. And again, based on your enrollment numbers for the last seven years, we're here to present kind of the projections going forward. On slide 13, this is the actual live births by county of residence. So this is Wayne County without the city of Detroit. So I know when Dr. Zolki presented, I believe he was showing the entire Wayne County. So what we've done is backed out those numbers. So this is a graph again, really going back to 1990. If you take a look, 1990 was really the last year that Michigan as a state saw, I'll call it increase in birth rate. It's been a pretty steady decline since then. For any of you that were born in 1958, that was the height of the baby boomers. There's roughly 250,000 students born in the state. The state right now is just about 113,000, so almost half of what it was in 1958. So you look at the age of your facilities, when they were constructed, and then again, how do you repurpose and reutilize? And obviously, you have growth experience here. But the good news is, we have seen a leveling off the last three or four years in Wayne County with live births right around 13,500. I do, we do point out, if you take a look at that red line, that's kind of your existing cohort. So your kindergarten numbers were based on that 13,028. And so it's seen a slight increase up to about 13,500. So when someone asks, you know, are we at the bottom of the decline birth rate, we believe we are. And again, I don't think we'll ever get back to 16,000 live births in Wayne County in the next 10 years. We work a lot with Wayne State, SEMCOG, et cetera. They're looking at that 13,500 kind of being the next five-year trend for birth rate going forward in Wayne County. So this is the I chart, this is the I exam that we come up with on slide 14. That thick black line in the middle, everything to the left is your historical data. So again, this is FTE. So this is full-time equivalency, K through 12. And then also below that, we include the alternative ed plus the special education. The way the chart works, if you look in the upper left-hand side, you'll see 2,005 a year. Right below that, there was 14,216 births. Does everyone see that number? So that year, Dearborn Public Schools, based on your kindergarten enrollment of 1379, you capture roughly 9.7% of those eligible births. The good news, over the last seven years, that number's increased to over 11%. So even though the Wayne County birth rates decreased, you actually had an increase to those capture rates of those students choosing Dearborn Public Schools. We anticipate roughly a 10.64% capture rate for the next five years, based on the data that we have. Again, that thick black line, if you were to go right down that column of 2016, 17, again, this was last school year. If you have a positive percentage over 100%, that means you've grown. So for instance, from kindergarten to first grade, you'll see 104.74%. You had a 4.74% growth that year. What really stands out, if you take a look at eighth grade and ninth grade, you had a 25% increase from the previous year. That's been historical, what you've experienced. So again, some of the competing educational entities would stop at the eighth grade, and Dearborn Public Schools is able to capture those students at the high school level. Going out to the right side of that black line, again, we're looking at an increase of K-12 up to 21,496 in the next five years. And there's a subsequent slide that we actually break it down again by the high school level, middle school level, and elementary school levels. But total tally is a district, you'd be over 22,000 students in the five-year, based on the method one projection.
So a quick question, you have a consistent 10.64% increase every year versus having a fluctuation like there has been in the prior years?
Sure. So the 10.64 is actually an algorithm calculation. So again, we took a look at that birth rate. So next year, the incoming kindergarten class is based on that 13,028. We anticipate, based on the last seven years of your historical data and adjusting that by the demographics that we see in the report, that Dearborn Public Schools would capture about 10.64% of those eligible kindergarten. So that capture rate's going to be consistent for the next five years. We are showing pretty significant growth, again, to the right side of the bar at the K-5 levels, a little bit at the middle school, but ultimately at the high schools, we're going to see some of the growth. And I think the next slide will actually kind of delineate that a little bit to break it down from there. So on slide 15, again, this is just a, the key is on the bottom, the K-5 diamonds, that's the blue diamonds on the top. We show that you're going to go from roughly 9,055 students at the K-5 level up to about 9,100. So not a huge increase, but again, slight growth. And again, some of that's based on the adjustment of demographics that we've seen. The blue squares, that's your six through eight. So again, really increasing the next year or two, but leveling off over the next five years. And actually, we're able to go up to 2026 because these individual students are actually in the kindergarten levels now and working their way through the system. And then lastly, at the high school level, you can see an increase from the 6690 currently up to roughly 7,300 in the next five years. In the report, it's really broken down by Dearborn High School. You currently have about 1,940 students. We anticipate the next five years, that'll just be over 2,089 students. At Edsel, you're currently at 1334, seeing that number go up to about 1507. And then at Fortson, you're about 2567 currently, and we anticipate that being just over 2,800. So that combines up to the 7,327 students breakdown. So at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to Board President and the Superintendent for any additional questions.
Can anybody have questions?
Now, does this take into account the immigration population?
It does. Yes, it does. And again, that's-
How do you assess that?
So, so what we have been doing, we actually subscribe to a demographic software. There's actually two databases, so you think of Nielsen Claritas. So if you watch TV, go online, you go to the gas station, swipe your card, you get coupons the next day. Like, who's buying that information? We actually buy it for our corporate clients. Where should I put my next data center? Where should I have my next financial institution? Where should I have my next manufacturing facility? So we're actually able to take that blue polygon within the district and see how many applicants have come through for new addresses, new emails, immigration records, move-in, move-outs, et cetera, new job starts, foreclosures. It's a pretty robust database. So we've incorporated, that's why you'll see it says it's adjusted based on the current demographics going forward to the right side of that, that thick black line.
Thank you.
You bet.
One of the other things that's occurring right now in Dearborn, it's got a lot in the press, is Ford Motor Company and some of the new developments that they're doing here. Was that also included? Because the plan is, I don't know how successful it will be, is that they will, hopefully, the new employees that they bring onboard will be potentially looking to move here as well.
Correct. So in the report, one of the things we do is take a look at the existing housing stock. And so if you take a look, unfortunately, you're not a Rochester where you have a 20% opportunity for additional residential development. So we look at the number of houses, how many are occupied, what's the current rental rates. So again, if you're looking for an influx of, let's say, 2,000 families into the existing housing stock, we probably wouldn't see that here in Dearborn.
Right.
But if you're out in Brighton, South Lyon, Rochester, Troy even has some abilities to grow, just because they have vacant land. But we know Dearborn's predominantly 100% built out from a residential standpoint. So we do take that consideration. Coincidentally, we're talking to some of those corporations that are looking to invest here in Dearborn and bring jobs with them. And so the question is, is there housing stock within your blue polygon to really help increase that? And the answer is, right now, you've got a pretty occupied resi-
Right.
Restill a state, especially at the residential level.
But what do you do with a house like my house, for example, which has two people in it, but has a capacity higher than that?
Correct.
I mean, when you have your older former parents who are aged and, and the turnover, and the natural turnover of houses to younger families.
So we take that into consideration, what's going on in the residential market currently. So for instance, what we see in Rochester is, once the students have graduated, mom and dad actually like being in Rochester area. So they don't actually move, so it's not opening up new opportunities. So one of the things we do track are when do people move in and out of the district. So if you sell your house, move into, out of state, out of the area, or if you simply move from point A to point B, we're tracking those numbers. So again, you may like that little two-bedroom condo that's downtown above, you know, all the offices and restaurants downtown. We're tracking those as well from a residential standpoint. So again, if we saw, let's say, a 15, 20% vacancy of housing stock, then our projections would be adjusted for that.
Okay.
But you're pretty well occupied in terms of residential real estate market at this point.
I, I do know that one of the things that was brought to my attention by a lot of the school principals when they did home visits. We have a lot of families who have brought other family members. We have a lot of people who are occupying homes that really weren't, they were single-family homes, that they have included a lot of other family members-
Ben Mersch, correct.
-that they've come in. So it's kind of hard to keep the count, so to speak.
Sure.
Because they're really utilizing the homes in a different way than what, what's generally anticipated. So how do we kind of account for that then? Because we have some neighborhoods that are heavily-
Multi-family, sure. So actually, on slide 11, if you could, I think it's on my computer, so hopefully it's on yours. If you take a look at total households, it's the second half. If you take a look at, let's say, for instance, the number of households, and again, this is a five-year trend, looking back 2010 through 2021. If you take a look at households over three persons, I mean, you're just looking at 2.7%, 3%, 4.7% growth for the next five years with those types of housing. So again, take a look at the total number of 16,300 units of housing, and then trending out saying, we're seeing a, you know, 2% to 4% growth of houses with more than five, six, seven families. That's how we're tracking that. And so again, we've incorporated that into those-
So you have incorporated it as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds like you hit a lot of marks.
We try.
Although it looks on here like the median age of householders is increasing here.
Correct. Correct.
So-
And that's what you traditionally see is, if you're a growing district, you'll see the median household age in the 30s, 40s. Some are, I won't say aging districts, but you know, whether in their 50s and 60s and they don't have that residential turnover, you will see those that are significantly declining, i.e. Bloomfield, Farmington where- Yep.
That's why I'm asking. I mean, it looks like we're an old district, but in fact, we're one of the few districts in the state that's still growing.
Well, I'll tell you on slide 11, so that 33.2 going up to 33.8, for Farmington, that's 57.5 years of age. So-
Oh, okay. So I'm looking down at the bottom there, that 51, 52.
Correct. But we're saying it's median age with, like, for instance, households with children.
Up there, okay.
Correct. So again, we kind of separate both total, as well as who's really eligible to come to school district, so. Like I said, a lot of great information from a demographic standpoint. That's why I had 15 minutes, so.
Now, can you give us those numbers again for each high school?
Sure.
Those are not in the-
Actually, like I said, it's in section four, actually broken down by method one, two, and three, but I could very quickly-
It's not in the PowerPoint that we're looking at here.
Correct. Yeah, so real quickly-
It's in the original, I think.
So 2021, so Dearborn High School will be at 2,089 students. Edsel Ford will be at 1507, and then Fortson will be at 2838.
Thank you.
You bet.
And that's for, that's for 2021?
Correct.
And when do you think we're at our peak population?
It's a good question. This is our first year doing it for Dearborn Public Schools. Traditionally, leveling off, we'd like to probably do it next year, kind of looking at the enrollment based on what was that capture rate, that 10.64%. Again, right now, Wayne County's right at 13,500, but we'd like to see how many more of those households, two, three, four, five, six, seven-person households have increased or decreased based on that. So, you know, if I go back to the very last slide, I think at the elementary school, you're pretty much there. We have you on an upward projection of 7,500 students at the high school level in 2026. So about 300 more students than what we'd see in the next five years. So we start to see that leveling off in 2021, based on the information that we have to date. So this kind of gives you a, call it a 10-year runway at the high school level, to help with that capital planning.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Wall has a question.
Mr. Willis, did you take into consideration the forward expansion project they have currently going on in Dearborn?
Actually, we have not, since this is our first year. With that, again, I think that was back to what are some of the board policies? So enter-school of choice, school of choice, academies coming in, but that was not included if that's a first-year program. So it'd be something that if, if we're honored to do it again next year, is incorporate those numbers. We have done that with other districts of Wayne County that have really changed operationally in the last year or two. So again, we're basing on that FT number from last year, and then any additional programs, we'd want to try to capture that below the line, if you will.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Masuri, who has a couple of slides that kind of highlights the different studies. And then following that, we're going to go into some designs at Dearborn High. So turn it over to Mr. Masuri.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Zolki and Mr. Willis, much appreciated. All right. It kind of stole my thunder a little bit, but that's okay. We don't have to tell you the same thing twice. So basically, for us, we use four sources for our, for our projections. We have our own internal projections where we use the same cohort survival rates, as you heard Dr. Zolki mention, and our current enrollment. And then we have a differentiation. So for example, certain schools like River Oaks, where the population's highly transient, those are the most difficult for, for us to project. But at the same time, we have a rate as to how often the kids, the same kids are staying. Because headcount just gives us numbers, but we also have to look at the same individuals, like how often the individuals are with us from year to year to year.
Do we have a PowerPoint for you?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the main PowerPoint. Okay, so, so we use our internal projections, we use Stan Fred Internal Management Systems, Middle Cities, as you heard, who you heard from today in Plant Moran, Cressa. The methods, I tried to simplify them as much as possible because I know if I was sitting in your seats, that's what I would want. Basically, method one is the one that's most applicable to our district. Again, as Dr. Zolki mentioned, it takes over the five-year, the five-year span. And for our district, it makes the most sense because we don't have any major impacts. There's nothing, as our boundaries have been pretty, you know, standard for, for a while. We haven't had an influx of new charter schools or private schools that are taking kids from us. And we haven't had charter schools and private schools that are closing down. You know, they're losing kids here and there, but at the same time, it's pretty stable for, from that area. Method two, again, it was mentioned, I don't want to go over the same thing twice, and method three was mentioned as well. They don't apply to us as much, again, because of our situation. We have a pretty stable situation when it comes to our public schools. The enrollment analysis, these are the district numbers. You see where our numbers are, and, you know, we tend to be very close with Plant Moran's numbers. I will tell you, for, for me, for, I can do three years pretty well. Five years gets a little bit more complex. I don't really allocate too much time when it comes for five-year projections for the entire district because of birth rates and everything else and the ratios that have to be taken into consideration. But I think they're, again, they're pretty, pretty close as far as where we, where we think we will be. And then the, the most important one for, I guess, for our conversation for today is this slide here that shows Dearborn High School. And Plant Moran, by the way, is the reason that's the only one there, is that they're the only ones that did an individual study for us for, by high school. The Stan Fred doesn't do that, and Middle Cities doesn't do that either. So Plant Moran does that for us, so that's why it's only the, our internals and our Plant Moran. And by the way, with regard to our internal, I have to thank Farida Nahid for all her help and support throughout that because without her, I would sink. She, she's terrific as far as pulling the data and everything else that I request, so. Anyhow, so internally, there are numbers, no sense in me reading them to you, but those are some of the numbers, I think, the same numbers that Mr. Willis just shared with you, as far as Dearborn High School, Edsel Ford, and Fortson in 2021. And then the 21, 22 numbers are there as well.
So do you, are you peaking our enrollment in next year?
Yes, our enrollment in 1819 looks like it's going to be the highest for us. He has gradually increasing. Again, we use a little different formula than he, than, than Plant Moran uses. They, for us, we take into consideration some of the new enrollments, again, that we get, that they're not, they're not aware of. They don't, they don't see some of those. To give you an idea of what I mean by new enrollments, I mean students that are new to our district. They were in our district and left and came back, or totally new to our district. And just at the high school level, again, because that's what I wanted to focus on, for Dearborn High School already this school year, they've already enrolled 52 students that are new to our district. Edsel Ford, 25, and Fortson, 42. Now, last year, in the entire school year, Dearborn High enrolled 64. Dearborn High usually is going to enroll most of their students in the first, you know, month of the school district, uh, month of the school year. They don't usually enroll kids throughout the school year. Fortson, on the other hand, 144 students last year, new to our district throughout the school year. It's because they're enrolling kids. We get a lot more refugees, immigrants, people who are coming from abroad. So we get a lot of students throughout the year at Fortson. Edsel had 69 students enrolled that were brand-new to our district last year.
So your numbers to date, are they confirming what you think so far, or are they higher than you had thought?
Our numbers right now are pretty close to what we, we, we expected. The only school that's a little bit higher than we expected is Snow, I'm sorry, Smith. And the only school that's a little bit lower than we expected is Snow. But Snow has a lot of late registrations, and obviously, we're still, we're still enrolling people every day.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, next I'm going to ask Mr. Wall and Mr. Bjork to come up and talk about some of the potential designs for expansion at Dearborn High. And just so the board is aware, that this PowerPoint later on will go into different scenarios about with the population. But for right now, we're just going to look at the, the specific expansion potential, which the board, the Building and Site Committee has already looked at.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
We were asked to come up with some conceptual designs for Dearborn High around July. And we had talked to Mitchell Moat and TMP. They were the two arch, primary architects on these designs and conceptual designs. The first one, we'll go with option A. That has 14 classrooms. I don't know if you're, you have a PowerPoint here? Oh, you do have it, okay.
Yeah.
You have this too?
And the PowerPoint.
Okay, good. All right. Option A here, this is an addition of 14 classrooms. It's the, let's see, that would be the north wing, if you were the front of the school, the furthest one towards Cherry Hill. That's what we would add on to. We would add four classrooms on the first level. And we would also look at to the addition of the cafeteria because you have to have the ancillary, you know, addition with a greater population. You have to be, expand the cafeteria. So we would be looking to bump the cafeteria out towards the parking lot. There's a little green space there right now, and we could utilize that and gain some additional, you know, area for the cafeteria. And this option here, we're looking to build up to. If you turn your page or go to the second page here, you can see an additional, 10 classrooms there. Yeah, 10 classrooms on the second floor. So this is an upper-level addition. Now, this does take into account the cafeteria, the fort, this is a net gain of 14 classrooms for Dearborn High. This also, someone had talked about a storm shelter. There's new state mandates. If you have new construction, you have to have a storm shelter available for the addition. Right now, we don't know if we would be grandfathered in. I think the state's taking that into consideration as far as this new law of regulation, because it does- it does prohibit some additions for other districts to it, because it's a hardship. So again, you know, right now, I think we could be grandfathered in before a certain date, but I'm not sure, you know, exactly how they're going to enforce this regulation. But that cost right there would be an additional $120,000 if we were to have to build the storm shelters for this addition.
Okay, why did the, I thought it was half a million that Mr. Wall was telling us.
It was probably an estimate at that time, because it was a new law. We didn't actually have time to talk to the architect.
Oh, okay, all right, so, okay, I can just get rid of that number.
Now, one figure in here, we have, for existing mechanical upgrades, we have $150,000. I feel that's a little light. We have some infrastructure of that building, I think, that needs to be looked at, especially with our sewage and storms there around that area. We have a lot, a lot of storm shelters, a lot of storm drains there, and we're also in the Rouge River basin there, that we have to take into account, because everything that goes off that building goes right into the Rouge River there. So I think that's a little light, and I'd like to see that figure closer to like a $500,000 figure right there. And I did talk to the architects, but we did not have time to change this. So there's like an additional $350,000 as far as the mechanical, electrical upgrades.
So instead of 150?
It should be, I would say closer to half a million there.
So you still get your half a million?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so.
But what I remember from other construction is now we have to put in a retention pond?
Well.
So would that be the case here, that we'd have to put some retention over at that side of the building, rather than it running off to?
Those are the calculations we would have to look at, too, depending on what addition we have, if we build up. We have a flat roof that has the drain. We do have storm retention there, but I don't know how that, you know, the amount of rainfall that comes off that flat surface, there's a calculation you would have to use that would be probably required, or, you know, maybe we could choke it down into the existing drains, you know, I don't know that. But those are calculations we would have to look at, depending on the option.
Well, and isn't, quite frankly, isn't the upstairs is going over and already existing?
It is.
So wouldn't that have, that's, that's just, it's going up, but it's covering the same amount of surface?
Still, sometimes they look at new construction and, you know.
And try to find a way to jam it to us.
With new regulations, you just don't know. So, yeah, I'm not going to.
Well, I'm just saying.
With what just happened in Texas, I mean.
Oh, I understand, but we've, we're already covering the property there with an existing building, so we're just going up. So we're still, the surface that's being covered, the rains would be hitting either the first floor or the second floor at the same spot.
Yeah, my only concern is, I mean, it seems like we're having 100-year rain events every 10 years now, so.
So some of the regulations may be a little different right now, but that we would address definitely during construction and design. And that, that option A, the total is about 8 million, really it would be a little bit more than that, because of the mechanical upgrades.
So closer to 9 million?
Yeah, closer to $9 million for that option right there.
But this is one that could be phased in?
Yes, yes, you could phase this in.
We could do the first floor.
You could do the first floor, or then.
And the cafeteria.
Cafeteria, and then basically build the upper structure, and get the steel up and work on that the following year, as far as enclosing it, yes.
Does the cost of the cafeteria, since that's pretty much a given in all these options?
Yes, it is.
Is that already included in the cost for all of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is. Yeah, everything's broken down with the cafeteria, yes. I'm sorry, what?
Option B.
Option B. Option B here. Option B here, we have an additional four classrooms on that existing wing that I just talked about, but this one, we would look at building into the courtyard. We've done this at Etzel Ford High School, and we would gain four classrooms there, but we would basically have a net classroom of seven. We would lose a classroom, because we would have to expand this entranceway where it currently is, due to fire regulations, so they have access to that courtyard. Again, this does include the cafeteria, so, you know, it says eight classrooms, but you have a net of seven, because you do lose a classroom there.
Okay. The classroom that we lose, because you have to have, it's a fire?
We have to have access into the courtyard there, yes.
Could it still be used as a, some usable space?
No, no, we'd have to remove that classroom totally.
So what you're showing, though, here is that it would just be like a storage?
Yeah, it'd be a smaller storage area, yes.
And is that a new regulation? I mean.
No, this is an existing regulation. Anytime you.
But they're not telling us that we'd have to knock out that class because of the courtyard? It's because we'd add classes inside the courtyard?
We would have to knock that out due to regulations.
So people, so there's enough room for walking?
Right.
But that's more for fire.
There it is.
It's more for fire access.
There you just can't get a fire truck in there.
Right, yeah.
Is a fire truck?
A fire truck's not, but it's, there's regulations for existing entranceways, where you have something like that into a courtyard, and that's the regulation it has to be.
Okay.
And that option right there would be about $5 million. And we go to option C. This one right here, we have, again, the courtyard, the four classrooms, but now we turn the media center into classrooms, like talking about phasing, this could be done over a two-year period, too. We would use the existing media center, again, one, two, three, seven classrooms there, the four classrooms in the courtyard, and four on the first floor off the existing wing, and that would be a net of 10 classrooms. And again, this could all be phased in. You could do the classrooms, and then maybe move the, build the media center on the outside, and then renovate the existing media center to classrooms. So that's just another option. Again, this, this addition right here is, that'd be about $7.2 million. And then we have, okay, an option 1C. The option 1C then is, again, the, option C is the 10 classrooms, and option 1C would be putting the four classrooms in the courtyard. So, and that, again, with four classrooms in the courtyard with 1C, that brings that up to about $9 million. And the very last option is option D. Again, it's renovating the existing media center, and then on this one here, we extend the hallways, and we build another wing next to the existing wing, and we would have built four classrooms plus two, so we would gain a net of 14 classrooms on this one right here.
But instead of building up, we're building out?
We're building out. And this one right here stresses our current footprint. We're almost, if you look at.
I was going to say, well, how close are we?
Yeah, we're very close to the easement, and basically, you know, the existing property So those are the four options that we.
Cost of this one?
Oh, I'm sorry, the cost of that one's about $9.5 million.
And all those estimates you gave us, then, is for the additional mechanical that isn't shown on the slide?
Yes, yeah, I feel we need another $350,000.
So we have to add that on to all of these?
Yes, add it on to every one of the bottom totals.
All right. So we're adding about $350 to each one of these?
Now, construction timelines, I noticed some of the timelines you had, as far as discussion, going to the community and things like that. Soonest, it would take, you know, by the time a decision came down, we may be looking at, partial design is phasing some things, three to four months from that date. We have state approval, final drawings, maybe another nine months to a year and a half of construction after that. So you're looking at 1920, or the fall of 2020.
After our peak.
Yeah, in other words, after all the kids have gone through.
So that's, that's the construction timeline, and I think that's realistic. Really, for some of the bigger jobs here, if we build up, you're looking at September of 2020, the six classrooms, the cafeteria addition possibly, September of 19.
When you're saying the six classrooms, are you meaning the?
The courtyard one.
The courtyard, no, I'm talking the courtyard, and the two on the front, and then the cafeteria.
But the media center could be quick, a little bit quicker?
Well, it depends. We would have to build the media center on the outside first, move that in, and then we could work on the renovations on the inside. That's a little bit bigger addition, you're probably looking at 2020 for that.
So what's, what's the most expedient, the one with the courtyard classrooms?
The courtyard, maybe in the four in front and the cafeteria.
With the four in front and the cafeteria? That's, that's the one that could be completed in?
I'm going to say at the soonest, probably the winter of 1920.
So that one is which, B?
That's, yeah, B.
With that one, too, Jim, if I'm understanding, too, is you could always then look to later on, move the media center, if you did choose to go for that.
You could, and if you wanted to build up after that, too, you could build the addition on top.
And it could be any of the.
You could go to any of the options with that, yes, for future planning.
For future.
Again, though, you know, when you're piecemeal construction, construction costs do go up then.
Remind me of the cost of this?
Pardon?
Cost of this?
Of, five million.
About five million.
Five million.
Okay, Dr. Mead, I know you had something.
Excuse my ignorance, but what does the media center do? What is the function of the media center? I mean, do a lot of students go into it?
Dr. Mead, as a former media specialist. It's for research, and it's now changed quite a bit, so there's a lot more technology integrated in finding the information that you need. So I'm sure it still houses books, but technology is an essential piece of it as well.
So it's like a library with technology? So is it heavily used by students?
I believe so, yes. That's the feedback that we get.
So putting it way far away, one of the designs here puts the media center farthest away from where students are in their classrooms. So does that make a difference?
No. I wouldn't think the distance makes a difference. If anything, it'd be a nice walk outside on your way to the media center. But the high school principals are here, you guys are welcome to join.
Yeah, they're looking a little nervous in the back.
The one thing I'd add, too, with the media center option, and I know Mr. Martin. Well, Mr. Martin did say, I mean, obviously, you'd prefer it a little closer, because of lunch and other things, but having said that, the option to expanding it is that you could make it more state-of-the-art, if you did build new. So that's just one thing to consider as well.
That's only if you had the money to make it state-of-the-art.
Okay, it wouldn't decrease the amount of, it wouldn't decrease the utilization by students, okay.
From touring buildings, last fall, I saw a couple of buildings where the media center was not central, it was out on a wing, and it did seem like they were not getting as high of utilization. I mean, if the students only have so much time to get between classes, and it's way out there, and then if they're in the classes, is the teacher going to take the time to walk them down there? I don't know if that's still done.
In high school?
But that's a lot of, that's a lot of travel time between rooms.
For, for high school media centers, the students would usually go to class for attendance and then walk over, so it wouldn't be that crunch time with the four minutes in between classes.
Yeah, they're just given a pass to go.
They would be given a pass to go.
But that's, that's still more kids in the hallways. And you don't necessarily want them in the hallways.
Well, they're going to get in the hallways to go to it, no matter where it's located at, I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah, come on up to the microphone.
This is important.
We want you on.
We want you on TV.
And your position.
Do you have a vested interest in this?
Anna Martin, Principal, Dearborn High School, 32524.
Well, if I can say, I appreciate, we have all the administrative team here, the executive directors, and all the high school principals are here. They had PD all day with their staff, they've been preparing, and they have building PD tomorrow, so they're dedicated, so I appreciate all of them being here today.
And thank you, yeah, thank you very much for being here.
So what I was going to add is, regardless of what you guys do at Dearborn High, it's going to create an opportunity for solutions, because it's not going to be a perfect fit. We're trying to create more space in a building that originally wasn't designed for that space, right? So if we move the media center outside, inside, wherever it goes, other things are going to be displaced. If you add classrooms on top of G-Hall, there's opportunities there on both sides. I would say, what you bring up is valid. Our teachers do go to the media center regularly, the media center is used a lot. One point you brought up about students not having the ability to drop off books on the way to, that's accurate, you know, we could create a solution with a drop box near the office or something like that. So in terms of student use from classrooms, I don't think that would deter it, it being out there, because teachers are signing up and taking their kids to media center, regardless of where it's at. The one caveat would be students dropping off books that they've checked out, but again, that's an opportunity for us to create a solution.
You could have a drop off in the main office.
Yep, in the main office, yep, exactly.
I do have a concern now, I mean, we're putting on a cafeteria, because we know that more students in the building creates more stress on the building, but we're not talking about a gym, we're not talking, there's no way we can increase the hallways, and I remember years ago, a discussion about Fortson, I mean, the hallways are small, and we can keep adding on classrooms and bathrooms and whatever, and cafeteria.
But the rest of the infrastructure is still stressed.
But the rest of the building is still the same building that was built originally for whatever, so.
Yeah, the bathroom space, the outdoor.
I mean, it still is a concern, yeah.
Yep. There, there's a lot of variables and a lot of concerns, absolutely.
Passing time, I mean, the students do a great job, I'm there a lot, you know, monitoring them, you know, you guys do a great job, but it is, it is busy, it's very busy, and again, the students are very polite, it's really nice to see, actually, the positive culture in the hallway, given that you're literally using the whole hallway, as we kind of step out of the side, as we see the students moving from class to class, but they do do a great job, given the fact that we do have a lot of students at Dearborn High.
With the existing media center, is the space being used effectively? If it was a brand-new media center, would it be the size that it is now, or could some of that space be already turned into like a classroom?
So you asked two questions. Number one, if the media center was being used effectively, I would say yes. We have teachers and counselors, it's used all the time, at lunchtime, before school, after school, we added some additional funding to make sure it was open for students to do work. So being used effectively or efficiently, I would say absolutely yes.
We're not really wasting any square footage in there.
I mean, so, if you want to rob Peter with pay Paul, like, that's an option, but somebody, at some point, you're going to lose something, right? It's kind of prioritizing your space and making some decisions there. The pieces that I would say may not be efficiently used are the bookshelves that hold books, because you don't have kids through there as much as you may have had 30 years ago. But I don't necessarily know that it's in our best interest as educators to get rid of a school library either. I wouldn't necessarily say that that's something I support, because I still have a large portion of our students that check out books regularly, and that's their opportunity, they're in the school to do that.
Well, and they still use the space for study groups, and our school media centers aren't really luxurious as it is. I mean, we've all been in all three of them. They're beautiful.
Well, except for Fortson's, a little fancy.
Fortson is fancy, but it's not a lot of space.
But I'm just thinking back to when there used to be a lot more books held there. There's not as many books held there, it's being used for a lot more multimedia. And is that much room needed for the multimedia?
I would say it's used for multimedia and collaborative, cooperative space, too. So when there's group work, they go down there, so that way kids can have cooperative learning time. You know, we do have a computer lab there, that's used just as much as the tables are, which I would say is the majority of it, and then the other piece is, you know, students in there checking out books on a regular basis. A lot of our language arts teachers promote that with their students, they'll bring them down for, you know, you'll have 15 minutes to check out a book, and they get that book for their individual reading time, too, so.
Yeah, I think, I think from my understanding, in the past, when my kids were in school, they specifically attempt to align a lot of the reading list and whatever with what they know is already available in, in the library, so that the students are encouraged to go and use it.
Correct, and we do use our funds to support providing leveled text and literature that we know that the kids will be interested in reading, and upgrading that, too. I work with our media specialist, and our literacy coordinator work together to make sure that what we're, what we're replenishing in there is new update and what the kids would like to read.
I don't, I don't know what they're, whether they're using it or not, but I know we have an interlibrary loan amongst, or at least theoretically we do, amongst our high school libraries, too, so they send books back and forth also. So if one doesn't have it, they will share with, just like Michigan State libraries do, so I think they're trying to use the media centers as much as, as they can for the students' benefit.
Now, also with options C and D, we're adding more square footage also than on the outside of the building, I'll call it. outside of the building, I'll call it. From a safety and security standpoint, what would that mean? You've got additional doors, additional monitoring, whereas if we're building in the courtyard, you're contained.
So we have 36 outside doors right now, which is plenty of opportunity for someone to come in from the outside and kids from the outside to go, inside to go out. We don't necessarily have an issue with it. Right now, you know this because you walked the building with me, like going from our G Hall, you know, there's a pass through that goes through outside, and it's a non-issue. We have teachers that man those doors, we also have security guards during transition time that are assigned there as well. So again, regardless of what you do, it's not gonna be perfect because you're creating something that was specifically built for a student population, and you're making it work for what the student population is. But I will tell you, I see that as opportunities for creative solutions.
A really positive approach.
Real quick, this, this current summer, to address some of these immediate needs, we've added seven classrooms at the Hite Center, we've put three at Dearborn High and five at Fortson, and we've used the shop areas and, you know, converted certain areas, and overall throughout the district, we've renovated 24 classrooms this year to prepare for the student enrollment. So we're, our infrastructure is pretty stressed out right now.
I, I think that's a great point too, Mr. Burke, because I, I really wanna underscore that because I think as a district, we've been really good stewards of our space, of the infrastructure that we have, and we're trying to make our facilities and our students match as much as we can with things that don't necessarily, the things that change over time in their youth, so I really thank you for that because that's really important. And I think regardless of what we ever, what we do decision-wise on a bond or anything else, that's an important point to mention is that we have, we've used.
We squeeze every.
We've squeezed all the use out of every inch of space in, in almost every one of our schools. We've been good stewards of our school buildings.
You've missed an example too.
Right here, yeah.
Our human resources, and we brought the special education from the Berry Center over to human resources to make room for more classrooms. So we're running out of ideas, we're still, we're still trying though.
Running out of space, running out of ideas, yeah.
And real quick, I just want to let everybody know, we have a 15% contingency on all these options, okay? So there is a contingency that's built in with these construction costs.
And I assume you'll put in any contract also, or, Mr. Wall, something as a sweetener to make sure they're done timely and on budget? I think that we've included that in the past for most of our contracts so that if they meet the goals for the, for the construction time-wise and cost-wise, I thought that we had done something with that. Is that at the college?
That was at the college, yeah.
Okay, all right, sorry.
No, we, no, we, we've never done that, but this last one, we finished a year and a half in advance and $2 million under budget, so.
We did come in under budget, yeah.
So we have a pretty good track record of, you know, the bonds.
The other thing, if I could, could I just add, ask Mr. Martin, and I know we talked about it at the Building and Site Committee, but, you know, it also is a philosophy of your curriculum and what you wanna do. So right now, we have teachers shifting all around the building to make room. So you can make that work, but is it optimal with your curriculum instruction? That's, you know, philosophical viewpoint, so I don't know if you wanted to mention, we've had to, in the former principal, Mr. Baughman, had, you know, initially brought it to our attention that we were running out of space and we were moving people around throughout the day. So again, and I know Mr. Misher, we've talked about that, there's different philosophies to that, so you could, you know, tighten everyone in, make it optimal, but then it does have an impact on curriculum, so I don't know if you wanna comment on it.
So we have 69 classrooms, and we have basically 88 teachers to share those 69 classrooms. Obviously, that's a 19 teacher difference. Last year when I got there, we had teachers, generally less veteran teachers, that were moving around four and five times during the day from class to class, and they handled it like champs, you know? Teachers are very resilient, so this year, we basically shared that sacrifice across everybody. We have 33 teachers who will be moving at least once throughout the day, but we were pretty diligent in how that worked in terms of building that during their planning time so if they have to travel or they're not running to catch kids in class. But what that does mean is 33 of our classrooms are used all, all day long, which is about 50% of our building, so there are at least 33 teachers who are displaced on their plan where they're not actually able to plan in their classroom for curriculum and things like that. I will tell you, that is not optimal, but we're making do with what we have. We have two teachers that are moving three times throughout the day, and that was just a product of we were out of rooms. And I, hey, go ahead.
Well, quite frankly, where do, where do those teachers land in between classrooms then?
So we, so we, so we have.
The media room?
Media center, yeah, some of them will be on a computer in the media center. We have some teacher workspaces that are smaller venues that can't fit, they're not big enough to house kids.
Former closets?
What's that?
Former closets.
Yeah, former closets, book storage rooms that we've converted, so they, they have them, but again, it's, it's not ideal, but they're, they're making it work.
So in other words, if Mr. Martin gets up out of his chair, somebody.
That's right, exactly.
Play musical chairs, yeah.
Fully expected, fully expected.
Not quite, but, Dr. Mead.
You've probably explained this a million times, but when you put another floor above the current floor, what do you do, pillars on the outside?
Yes, and that's why we had contacted Mitchell Moat, they had done this in, in Ann Arbor, and that's why we, we discussed this with them to make sure that's, you know, plausible, yes. You do put pillars and beams across, and you'll have a gap in there, and it's, it is doable.
Okay.
Someone compared it to a flying buttress at a high school.
Yes.
Trusty Thorpe.
With the new classrooms, what would you expect to be student capacity in each of those, about 25, 30? What do you think?
We use 30, I use 30.
Usually assume 30?
For high school, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Now, while the buildings are under construction, obviously it's throughout the year, what's gonna happen to some of those classrooms that now the students can't go to because of the construction? Did we account for portable classrooms?
I'm sorry, we could do second shift, we've done that before, and depending on disruption, like, if we can do the shelves, you know, basically in the summertime and enclose them in the winter, we would section part of the buildings off and be able to do construction there without much, much, much disruption. We've done that at William Ford last year, we did it at Woodworth, we were able to put additions on with students in the building, and you have to be very careful, everything's gotta be, you know, for safety first, but it is doable.
And I just wanna say too, the last bond and all the projects completed on time, under budget, and you, your team, they did an outstanding job, so we appreciate the hard work and the support of the taxpayers because had we had not had that the last time, look where we may be without the expansion, we would be talking about elementary too.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody sufficiently, their brains sufficiently stuffed with, with info that we wanna take a break?
One quick question.
Yes, go ahead.
Do we have to choose one of these options, or can we say we would like this part from this option and this part from this option?
Good question.
We can mix and match, yeah, you, you can, yes. Again, it's a phasing thing, I think someone had brought up, if you want the four classrooms or maybe the addition in the courtyard, look at two years down the line, if you wanna put the 10 classrooms above, I think that's G Hall? Yeah, G Hall there, yeah.
Or a combination of reboundering plus construction or multiple ideas?
It's like a buffet. Go out there with your empty plate and figure out what you want.
Absolutely, just one more slide before we take a break.
Oh, okay.
It'll be a good slide to lead into the break.
Oh, okay.
All right, so the next slide talks briefly about the, what we would look for as board